Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. The time right now is seven P M. Going to ask Clerk Wykoff to please call the roll. Uh, yeah, there we go. Need to hit her microphone and go for it.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present in establishing a quorum are councilmembers Foulter, Kenny, Hanford, Davis, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. Councilmember Foulter, will you please lead us on the pledge? Thank you. All right. The first item that we have on the agenda this evening is public comments. This is the time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker. Interested in speaking if you've, I don't know if we have a sign in sheet, but if you're interested in speaking this evening, go ahead and put up your hand. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and invite Councilmember Representative Lowe forward. And if you could just please state your name and just association with the city of Monroe, which we all know for the record. And I will turn on your microphone. So, oh, nope, it was already turned on for you.
I'm good.
Yeah. Good evening. How are you?
Good. It's good to be back and see y'all. Sam Lowe, Snohomish County Council, and sure, just want to give a quick update. I know you guys are busy. You have a lot on the agenda, but I reached out to the mayor and asked if I could give a few quick comments from the county perspective today. As your county council member, I'm the only county council member that hasn't missed a vote this year, so I take my role as your county council member very seriously. And to have only one with perfect attendance, that's good, but that's not all that matters to you guys. I know you care about a lot of stuff. And one of the reasons why I'm here tonight is the Blake decision. I know that you guys have talked about that, and a lot of our cities are talking about it. As you know, the state legislature in the hundred and five day session did not take action on the Blake decision. I think we all expected them to because the two year law that they put in place two years ago expires on July first. Unfortunately, they couldn't come to consensus there. And so at the county council, we're tackling it. A lot of the cities are tackling it. The county council, we're actually taking a vote on our ordinance next Wednesday at ten thirty. We've had discussions over the past week. I think we had our third discussion on it today. Actually, two today. We had one this morning and one this afternoon. We'll probably have another one or two next week before we vote. And so I would encourage you to pay attention to that. I think it's important as a county that we do have something in place. We want to make sure people get help, but I think decriminalizing drugs and making it just a free for all for fentanyl and everything is not going to work. And so that's really the hugest thing that we're taking on at the county right now. The other one is the Health Department is now under the county as of January first. And so that's been a unique umbrella, moving something completely separate from the county underneath the county umbrella. We're still working out the kinks on that. So I appreciate you guys have served on that board for many years, different representatives from the council here. Appreciate your patience as the county works through that. I know they were meeting even tonight, working on final language for some of that stuff. As you know, I have extracurricular activities besides being your county council member. That the benefit to Monroe is I've been able to be in the budget negotiations on the state transportation level. And so, as you know, I'm assistant ranking on the state transportation. And the biggest discussion has been five two two. And if you saw the governor's budget that came out, the governor pushed everything out to about twenty thirty-six or so. And so it was a fight to get it pushed up and being in the room had a huge advantage because when I met with Chair Phi and Chair Phi has been great. And he, he said, why do we need to move the funding for this back up? And my response to him was this was fully funded under Chris Gregoire. And he said, you know what? That's all I need to know. And so in his budget, he moved everything up, all thirty-three million. When I took office, they only had ten million from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine. Now it's up to thirty-one million that we have for five two two. And then when they negotiated with the Senate, the Senate didn't move it up. It still had it back where the governor had it. And so they came to a compromise of fifteen million for this biennium and sixteen million for the next biennium. So it's a good compromise. And what that means is the design right away and engineering is going forward on five two two. We are going to need another transportation package. Through that, I reached out to Wast out on the cost. I got very discouraging news, two hundred and seventy million for five two two now. And that's for the widening and the overpass at Paradise Lake Road. I kind of wanted to take the money and go a different direction, and I talked to your mayor about that earlier this year. But at the end of the day, they said, look, if we can get all this design right away and engineering, as soon as the state passes a transportation package, it's ready to go full steam. And so there's going to be a huge lift in the next year, two or three, whenever we can get that package. But we definitely need a package because there's so many projects that need to be done. So I know I went over my three minutes by a couple, but I'm happy to take a couple of questions if you want. If not, I'm happy to sit down and I want to hear all the stuff going on in Monroe, so.
Thank you. And it is our practice not usually to engage during public comment, but we don't always have our county council member and representative here. So I'll turn to council. Does anybody have any, any questions or comments? Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
No, just comment. I mean, I just appreciate the update and it was fun, you know, to be down there when, you know, lobbying to see you in your, in your, your freshman year. But obviously, your experience at the county, you could, you could see it in action in your first year in the legislature. Really nice to have you. I know you're not our representative, but I truly feel like you have the valley's, you know, interest at best. You would have been previously, right? And I would say the thing I appreciate the most is how you do work in a very toxic environment down there and work across the aisle. And it is very apparent. So I truly appreciate that, or whatever it's worth.
I do love working across the aisle. And I do want to say Senator Hawkins, Representative Steele, and Representative Gainer, they're, they're excellent to work with. They truly are. And, and they're doing a very good job for Monroe. And they have a huge area to represent on both sides of the mountains. That's a, that's a lot of area to represent. They're doing a great job for you down there. And you should be proud of those three that you have down there. They're representing you guys well.
Right. All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember.
Thank you.
If there's any, oh, go ahead. Oh, thank you. If there's anybody else that would like to speak this evening that is who's in the audience, please go ahead and raise your hands. All right. And if you're online, go ahead and hit star nine if you're on the phone or hit the little raise hand button if you're in Zoom. All right. Seeing nobody, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, that item. First, I do want to make counsel aware that the two thousand and twenty-three state legislative session, which is under five point two, is not going to be held this evening. I did receive a phone call from Luke Esser earlier today. He's not going to be available this evening. And given that the state legislature is meeting beginning on the sixteenth and special session to talk about issues around the, the Blake. Do you like that? The Blake decision? We thought that it would be good to have him come back either the twenty-third or the sixth to give us an update on where things are. So he's going to be here either on the twenty-third of May or sixth of June. And then also, I know this will bum everybody out, but at this point in time, unless something comes up during the agenda, we will not have a need for an executive session this evening. So I am really sorry. I know five minutes turns into fifteen and, and so on, but that won't be needed this evening unless something changes. So watch what you say. All right. The next item that we have on the agenda is presentations. It's five point one. This is Snow Isle Libraries presentation. Going to go ahead and invite our Snow Isle Library up. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. And I feel your pain of no executive session. So glad to support you in that. Mayor Thomas and members of the council, I'm Lois Langer Thompson. I'm the executive director for the Snow Isle Libraries. Along with me tonight are Peggy Nielsen, who is the library manager for the Monroe Library. A special guest is Paul Ryan, who has doing double duty tonight. He also serves on the Board of Trustees. He's part of the Executive Committee, serving as the secretary this year, and also Vanessa Gutierrez, who is our community engagement manager. So we appreciate the opportunity to connect with you and give you a quick update on what's happening at Snow Isle Libraries. We center our work around equity, diversity, and inclusion to help us achieve our vision of connecting everyone with their library. We're committed to creating welcoming and inspiring spaces to bring our community together. And just to note, the Monroe Library is one of our most inspiring spaces. And you may have noted that we closed out the LCFA a couple of years ago, and so that went off your tax rolls as well. If you can move the slide forward, that would be great. The Monroe Library is a cornerstone of our community. The library is the place where we gather for learning, reading, and to seek and exchange information and ideas. The power and value of a community place is seen every day at the Monroe Library. We continue our commitment to working closely with our communities to make our libraries welcoming, inclusive, and easy to use. We support our local businesses through access to information on related businesses, growing your customer base, finding demographic data and market insights, and learning a new skill with LinkedIn Learning. And all of that can be done free with your library card. The library is also connecting our community to the beautiful outdoors by having Discover Passes available to borrow, also free with your library card. We are engaging children is a priority for the library. And we provide early learning support, STEM education programs, student access cards, and online homework resource help. And guess what I'm going to say now? All free with your library card. You'll notice a little bit of a theme. We're also building infrastructure and continuing to invest in Wi-Fi access for our communities. About a year ago, I think Congresswoman Del Benny held the town hall here at the Monroe Library. And we talked about the difficulty of those who are out of reach of broadband internet access and how important the library is to continue that access. We serve on the Snohomish County Broadband Action Team and are working towards that digital equity, digital equitable, equitable digital access for all. This access allows all of our community members to access telehealth, job interviews, and find the information they need. We will continue to have laptops and Wi-Fi hotspots for checkout, and of course, we provide Wi-Fi at the library. This essential service was so prevalent during the recent, it seemed recent, but the windstorm that we had last fall, where many of us lost power for days on end. And we saw people coming into the library, not just to access the internet, but to power up their phones and laptops so they could do their work and stay in connection with their families and friends. We also serve as a community point of distribution across the county and of course, provide access to voting boxes so that people can complete their voting. A new EDI section was added to our website, snowile.org, to celebrate and explore three areas: accessibility, citizenship, and EDI programs and services. Customers can browse the website in seven languages, languages, English, Chinese, Japanese, Korean, Russian, Spanish, and Vietnamese. We enhance the in-language browsing capabilities for a better search experience as well. And unfortunately, we serve as a cooling and heating center and also a clean air center during the wildfires that we experienced here in Snohomish County. And I'm going to turn it over to Peggy, who will share more information about the programs and services at the local library.
Hi, everyone. I'm Peggy. I'm the new manager over at the Monroe Library. Thank you for having us. Some of the special features and programs at the library include our holds lockers, which were installed during the pandemic and which allow for twenty-four seven holds pickup for anybody who would like to use them. We also have lots of ongoing events, especially for youth. And those include five very popular weekly storytimes, a little science lab program, and teen and tween gaming programs. And we also recently had a very delightful meet and greet with a mini therapy horse. Our summer reading programs are ramping up and they will begin in June. And they include highlights such as all ages construction zones with Legos and other goodies to play with. A theater performance of Who Stole the Queen of Hearts Tarts and a shelter pet painting session. And we also have programs for adults such as a recent candle making class and a tech help drop in. And some of our partnerships include Kids Club at Take the Next Step and partnerships with local schools and homeschool groups. And we recently finalized partnership with the community center to have tech help drop ins there for their clients. And that is just some of the things that you can find at the Monroe Library. I hope you'll come by and see what else we have to offer. And I will hand it back to Lois.
You can see why we're excited to have Peggy here at the Monroe Library. And so we are here as a resource to you, however we can help you. I would love to invite you to come for a visit and a tour. Peggy and I would be happy to meet you there and take you around. And just thank you for your time tonight, and I would open it up as well for any questions or feedback you have for us.
All right. Thank you very much, Lois and Peggy. I turn to the council. Any questions? And I will start off with Councilmember Kenny. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
Thank you very much for being here. And we do have a wonderful program here in the community, and just thank you all so much. I was really intrigued to hear that you have Discover Passes available. Can you tell me how that came about?
Yeah, it's a program that we are doing across the state. And so it was organized through that so that it's just free with your library card. It's a way to introduce the community to the, I mean, really, I, I'm not a native Washingtonian. I've lived here about four and a half years, and almost every day I drive out somewhere and I'm like, it's just ridiculously beautiful here. And to get out and enjoy that, and it's a way to make sure that everyone in our community has access to that. So it is a state, it's through the state library we sponsored that, but we just started offering it in the last six months, I think. Yeah, it's very popular.
That's a really great thing to also publicize as much as you can. I'll certainly be telling people about it, but those passes aren't cheap. They're expensive, and people sometimes don't know how to access a Discover Pass. And I just think that's a wonderful, wonderful thing you're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you. Do you happen to have the U S Forest Service pass too?
You do not believe we have the U S Forest Service pass. I don't know what the joke was there, but I sent a little one. National Parks, yeah. No, we're starting with Discover Pass.
No, that's great. I'm just giving you a hard time. I love going to the library. Whenever I'm there, it's always so clean. And it's just, it's nice. It's bright. It's quiet. So.
Yeah, thank you. We really do see it as a community asset, a place where anyone can come in for any reason and stay and feel welcome, a part of the community. And it's a great entry point as new people move into the community as well. So, and we take a lot of pride on making sure it feels like a good space to be in. So thanks for that feedback.
You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanford. Councilmember Foulter, go ahead.
Thank you. It was so nice to meet you guys tonight. I really appreciate that. Um, I was also very impressed with the Discover Pass thing. I think that's a really great idea. It's very exciting. I haven't been to the library in a couple of years, but I am one of them. I know, I need to get there. So I'm, I mean, I did start my kids with their library cards when they were. So I'm a big fan, but I do need to come in and have you guys show me how to do the audiobooks, which apparently I'm, shouldn't be paying sixteen dollars a month for to some other place. I should really go with you guys. So I'm just looking forward to getting to know you, and thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you for highlighting that. I'm a big user of our Libby, which is a service that we have. It's very easy to download audiobooks and eBooks and use them very quickly. And as I often say, you've paid for them once through your tax dollars. No need to pay for those books again. Come on and use them. We have lots on store for you. And we, all staff would be happy to help you do that as well. Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
So I also just want to say thank you for all your guys' involvement and improvement. The Discovery Passing is really, really great idea. And then just a quick story about all the little stuff that you guys do that I shared with you when you introduced yourselves. My son was actually there today and came home and was super excited that he found one of the hidden flowers and got a prize. And so as he was filling me in on his day, he showed me the prize that he got, which was Play-Doh at the library. So the things that you're doing are causing some excitement with our youth, and I really appreciate all of the time and commitment that you guys are putting in over there. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We really, I think especially, this is not news to you, but after coming through COVID, our teens and youth are really struggling and feeling that's a loss of connection that they had over those years. So that to come to the library, to feel welcome, to see that you won a prize, those are memories that will, will live forever for him and always make him a full part of the community. And so we really take that role seriously. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell, go ahead.
Yeah, appreciate you coming tonight. Yeah, I'm absolutely coming in the Discovery Pass, the audio, but the audio, so is there?
You don't even have to come in for that.
Well, that's what I'm hearing.
Download the app and you're good. You're good. Yeah.
So is that the same for the, because I'm also interested in hearing about the Ancestry Library Edition that's Snow Isle specific?
Ancestry dot com, is that?
Is that what you're asking against the backend or?
Yeah, it is ancestry through the library. You can just log in with your card number and your PIN and access that, just as you would the normal ancestry site. But it is free with your library card.
Our theme. We are always happy to help you, assist you if sometimes getting started can be a little tricky. Yeah.
All right. I'm not going to go activate my answer. It just expired, so now I'm going to the libraries. Fantastic.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Really appreciate everything you do with our library system. And thank you for the presentation and answering our questions.
You're welcome. Thanks. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That's item six, Consent Agenda. And I turn to the council. Insert Jeopardy music here. Councilmember Foulter, go ahead.
Hey, I'm first tonight. Move to approve the consent agenda as provided in the packet.
I have a motion from Councilmember Foulter, a second from Councilmember Scarborough to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Kenny? Oh, nope. All right. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business, item number seven point one, Economic Development Advisory Board, EDAB appointment. I'll turn to Tyler Christian. And go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. The agenda bill that you have before you this evening is the appointment for position three with a term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two for Mr. Carl Niemola, excuse me. Carl's been a long-term resident of the city of Monroe, and the mayor, Mayor Thomas and I had the privilege of interviewing and meeting with him on April seventh. He built his business here, Toolcraft, Inc., and has been operating that for over thirty years. Mr. Niemola has also attended several economic development advisory boards on his own accord as a member of the public, and we very much appreciate his input. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn that back over to you. And Mr. Niemola is in attendance with us this evening if you would like to come forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Niemola, would you please come forward and just state your name and for the record and just explain why you're interested in serving on EDAB for our council? Thank you.
Good evening, Carl Niemola. I'm thirty, thirty-three years in business in Monroe, graduated eighty-two in Monroe High School. All my kids with the Snohomish, but that's, that's her problem. Anyway. So basically, why do I, why I'm interested? A couple of reasons. Number one, my business partners said I should, so I listened a little bit to that one. But basically, over thirty years of head down working, not really getting involved in anything in the community, just working. Didn't even know there was a, there was a Chamber of Commerce in Monroe, and it was just never paid attention, anything besides working. Lot of hours. Now that I don't have to work full time, the next generation of my business has taken over. So I'm now in more of an advisory headache role. I create headaches, not, not solve them. So I have time to, to help. I'm definitely involved in manufacturing. I understand there's not a lot of people involved in manufacturing on the, on the, on the council. A lot of experience on how not to do things, so I can certainly tell you how not to do something when it comes to manufacturing.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, do you have any questions or a motion? Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Carl, it's good to see you. It's been a long time. I've worked with Carl years ago indirectly here in town. And so I'm thrilled. I think this is a great fit. I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Carl Niemola to the Economic Development Advisory Board, position three with the term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
I have a motion, a motion from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Gamble for the requested action in new business item seven point one. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Foulter, go ahead.
Carl, thank you for stepping up to serve as a fellow business owner. I think that it's very important that you get your experience on the table and just let people know how things affect us, those of us who actually make this stuff happen in the, in the city. You know, you manufacture that, I manufacture this, you know. But thank you for willing to, for being willing to serve. I really appreciate that, and I'll be voting to approve you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other discussion on the motion? Saying none, we'll call the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Congratulations, board member.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to go ahead and move on to new business item number seven point two. This is ordinance number zero zero five, two thousand and twenty-three, adopting the two thousand and twenty-one International Building Code. And I will turn to our building official, Stacy Priswell.
Good evening. Thank you. As you see before me, this, this great stack of Tetris ability here, I used the building codes to make sure that this would not fall over before I came in here. Before you have tonight is more of a discussion, but if there is an opportunity, I believe, to actually move this as a first reading for the adoption of the twenty-one building codes. Just real quick, some backstory on what that means is about every three years, and the reason I say about is sometimes the state or the International Code Council decide to move it or shift it a little bit to kind of make different codes work, such as the energy code. So approximately every three years, the state adopts these codes, and they make amendments to them as well. And right now, as you heard from Representative Lowe, I mean, legislation just was going through. Excuse me. We're trying to figure out exactly where we're landing. These codes are published through a national organization, and the state is currently making amendments to those to fit specifically Washington. So in that, we're trying to keep an eye on the wax. We're trying to keep an eye on these and make sure that everything's driving. So in that, July first of this year, so not too far away, the state of Washington is adopting these codes you see before you. So the reason I brought these here is kind of number one, you go, wow, that's a lot. And that's what I was hoping for, because when people hear about building codes, they think it's just kind of a simple, oh, everything's good. It's just one code. It's actually a lot of codes that have to work together. So when we look at adopting these, it's really important that we try to adopt them as a whole and not pull things out, pull things out, excuse me. So specifically, what I'm asking for through the agenda bill is there's a couple of Lynnwood, or excuse me, Monroe specifics, I went back there. For Public Works Department, they're asking for PRV valves, which is a pressure, pressure reducing valve, if you're not familiar with that, to be mandatory for all new construction. Basically, what that is, is the water pressure in the city can sometimes be high, can sometimes be low. When we go out and do a test, your water pressure in your house might be fifty PSI, then all of a sudden the fire hydrant gets let off down the line, or somebody else does something, we flush a system, and all of a sudden it's at a hundred and twenty. That's what I'm being told from Public Works. So that's an opportunity to not blow out all of your valves in your house or blow up your water heater, because that can get expensive. So that's a request that they're making. I put that into my code to make sure that we're in unison. Another one I put up is cleaning up some public works standards for grease interceptor language. There's a little bit of inconsistencies when you start talking about restaurants and when they're needed and where they're not. So we worked with Public Works to help clean that up. So that's some language that you'll see. The third one is mandatory pest control services for when you're demoing a house or doing land disturbance activity. For that one specifically, I took that language from the city of Kirkland. Maybe some of you have gotten the complaints when you're doing, doing developing, they start doing a bunch of stuff, and all of a sudden those rats and those mice go scurrying to the neighbor's house. And honestly, it's, it's tough for me to say, I'm so sorry about that. That's a civil matter. I wish you luck. I could love to have something on the books that makes it a mandatory that they hire somebody to come out and make sure that that rodent infestation is handled in a safe way before they demo the building, and we have those complaints, all those mice and rats go scurrying to your house, right? Another one is making special inspections be qualified through WABO. So if you're not familiar, WABO is Washington Association of Building Officials. And when that's important is they have a very thorough process for vetting special inspectors as well as testing agencies. The way that the code is set up, they leave it up to me as the building official to determine if you or your neighbor are qualified to check and make sure that structural steel, as a good, for instance, what's above your head when you go into coastal, is not going to fall down and hit you in the head. I have a lot of work to do. I don't have time to verify and check welds. WABO's got an incredible program. I'm just putting the code language in that that is specific, that they be approved through them. And then it's like a Disney Fastpass. I just say, perfect. You got the WABO stamp. We're good to go. The last one on here is what I'm calling, it's basically a tight lot or infill standard, but we're not going to be allowing a temporary CFO and even CFOs really. And that is specific to like, if you're at a multifamily development, so let's say that you have three or more units, then you only have one way in and one way out. The last couple of projects we've had in the city, we've done phasing and staging plans. And what has happened is it's a lot of work for us to try and manage that, where we have to go out and all of a sudden they've got lumber, delivery trucks blocking fire lanes. We've got people driving underneath forklifts with sixty pieces of OSB. Delivery trucks blocking fire lanes. We've got people driving underneath forklifts with sixty pieces of OSB trying to stock a roof. I mean, just in the wind, I mean, we're seeing some incredible things. So the more that we start kind of infilling these tight lots. I want to be able to have a way to say, on the front end. You know, make sure that you're planning this out the correct way, and let's try and build them all at the same time. So we finalize them all at the same time. Not have homeowners and kids trying to walk through a construction zone to dump their garbage in the middle of the night, right? So. I'm trying to find a way to do that. I've worked with several others. And again, it's not every single one. It's where you've got one way in, one way out. Is probably one of the bigger ones there. So lastly, what I've got to is just as a presentation. I printed out several copies, if I may, hand these out to you guys. And so what you see before you, I mean, if you haven't guessed by looking at the stack of books in front of me and, and kind of hearing some of that presentation is. The building codes are changing. One of the biggest ones that we're seeing right now is called the wooey code. I mean, this is relatively small compared to the books, the, the other books that are here, but I would say this probably has the greatest impact to what we're going to be seeing in the way that we do construction starting July one, moving forward. So in that, going through this book, which is a national standard. And then what the state of Washington has done to amend it and modify it. So real quick. Basically, what it's got is there is a map that you will see, there's a link. On this handout that I gave you is through the Department of Natural Resources. So the state did emergency ruling. And said that when the Department of Natural Resources finishes the map, which is basically. It's a young lady that works for DNR that sits at a computer. Looking at aerial images of the entire state of Washington and determines. Your piece of property in a forty acre parcel, anything within a mile and a half of that that could potentially burn. And cause forest fires or catch your house on fire, the embers is really what we're talking about. We'll put you into a color on that map. So it's very confusing. So myself, I started a, basically an interjurisdictional alignment with. Sultan Monroe, obviously, Duval, Goldbar, Snohomish, Stanwood, and Lake Stevens. Which you will see all the logos on the bottom of this. So that way, when we get a builder that comes into Monroe, we can say this same handout is being created through those, those partner cities. This kind of simplifies what that code, it's still complicated, I'm not going to lie. But basically, the gist is the way that we're building houses now and commercial buildings will not be the same. We're pretty much going to be non-combustible exterior walls. You're going to be a classic roof. You're not going to have ridge vents anymore, so even as simple as doing re-roofs is going to change. The way that we build decks, you're no longer to be seeing two by sixes and two by eights at sixteen inches on center. Now they're asking for four by eight beams every two feet on center. The decking that you're standing on is now changing. It's going to be fire rated, or you're going to go to a solid two my member. You're not going to have the cedar decking that you're used to having. There's substantial changes that have happened. So again, we put this together, we're sending it out, I believe, next week. As a group. I also forwarded this to WABO. And this is now, we also got the Washington State Fire Marshal's blessing, and they are going to remove the stamp or the city logos at the bottom. We're going to put WABO. Washington State Fire Marshal's office, and that's going to be sent to every jurisdiction in the state, hoping that this document will now help other jurisdictions provide input and get that out there. With that group too, we've also, we're in the process of maybe every seven to ten days, we're going to try and do an informational push to get information out there. It's going to be including the new deck standards that I mentioned, kind of have some diagrams on this is what was, and this is what is now. It's policy for plan review and permit submittals. Again, this starts July one. So what does that mean when people were trying to submit plans at eleven fifty-nine on June thirtieth? So we have a plan that we're trying to put together. It's going to be the same policy for all of our cities. We've got IRC significant changes, residential energy code changes, and IBC significant changes. So we're really trying to make sure we're getting the word out. For what's changing. But all that to circle back to the codes. And what you have before you is I'm asking that you would. If you have any questions, please ask me. Otherwise, I think there is an opportunity to make this a first reading, so we're meeting that July deadline.
Okay, and just to clarify, there's a, so the changes are the, all the material there that's on your, on your desk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the council, do they need to adopt for first reading this evening to make July first, or do they have? The ability to look through materials so that they can be better prepared, so they can be even more prepared?
No, you absolutely, there is, I was working with Ms. Wykow, and we are able to amend. One of the future council meetings are turned into a business meeting. So you do have an opportunity, if you want, these are available online too, or you can come to my office. I, like, a couple of these are actually the eighteen code. I have not purchased the twenty-one code, because we're waiting for the state adopted one. But yes, you're more than welcome to go through those codes and look through them. If you have questions, I would offer myself, but I actually leave for South Korea tomorrow. But you can talk to my plans examiner for more information on that.
Right, thank you. So I just want to clarify, I'm turning to our clerk, by when would this need to be adopted? Just so the council's aware of when they would need to do first reading and then second reading. June twentieth. All right, my interest council is just to acknowledge that there's a lot of material there and that you might want to have a little bit more time with it. So. If you want to wait to do first reading until a later date, you have the ability to do that. Thank you. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two questions. So this would just be on new construction or remodels also?
It's anytime that a permit is required, it's effective. I mean, specifically to the wooey one?
Yeah.
In front of you.
So, yeah, all the new stuff on the right there.
Yeah, so that, that it is not retroactive, so meaning you're not going to have to tear the deck off of your house or change your roof. Yeah, so if you're doing a re-roof, that applies.
Anything with a permit.
And we're also trying to part of this group, the way that the code is currently worded, if you do any, pretty much any work to the deck. I think that's a bit much if you have to replace a couple pickets on your guardrail. I don't want to be the one to come out and tell you, you got to tear off and try it again at fifteen thousand dollars, what price of material is going to be. So we're trying to come up with standards. The state did not provide that.
Okay. And so. That makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
And I don't mean to. Surprise you with this, but. You and I had a conversation about. Tough sheds. These places like Lowe's and other places that have these sheds. That they will not be in compliance after. This goes into effect, you, is, is that in the. In the things that we would read to approve, or is that just the way it's going to be?
That is just the way that it's going to be. The ones that I highlighted specifically. Are about the only amendments that Monroe could add. So this is going to be a state requirement, and again, what we're trying to do is get a list of all of our contractors, and we're going to be sending this out to them. The ones that we've worked with in the city of Monroe, and so are all the other jurisdictions. We're trying to make sure those go out. Part of that is Lowe's tough shed and the other, we want to make them aware of this. So. To answer your question differently, if you go to Lowe's and you buy a shed July one and it's delivered, you are out of compliance if it's within fifty feet of a habitable structure. So we would like to let no, Lowe's know that in advance, maybe they can do some kind of signage that they can put out there. Not saying they have to, but at least maybe notify their customers. The way around that is it doesn't mean it has to be taken away. It just means that you would have to use like maybe hardy plank siding or some different type of siding. To put over the T one eleven siding. Get rid of the soffit, because you're not allowed to have soffit vent anymore. That's the way that you could make the existing shed work, that you could do other things, but. The ones that you see down at Lowe's or you drive around. Empty lots outside the city. Those are illegal if you move them to your yard under this new code. That's nothing that we can amend.
Thanks. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Besides the fact that I would have loved to have been a part of this whole. We code thing. Some point in time, but unfortunately, it was not. And then just for the record, I'll, I will probably need more times, because I definitely want to review those things.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions from the council? Okay, if there's an interest in passing this for first reading, then I would want to have a motion to, to adopt, to. Have this meet the requirements for first reading. Or something more artful than that. Perfect. Okay, so I, I'm detecting from council, there may be an interest in not doing that right now. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, that's all I was going to say, I think there's a general. There's a few.
I'm seeing shit, head shaking.
Yeah, we have plenty of time, so I think we're. I think we're okay.
So one of the things that I'm going to acknowledge is that a couple of us get comments from builders on a, on an occasional basis. And so if you have anybody that regularly comes to talk with you about. Permitting requirements and things like that, I would encourage you to reach out to, to those folks that are part of your networks. Let them know that this has been brought forward for your consideration. There's only so much room for council to make decisions, because a lot of this is state-driven. But it will be important, I think, for those folks to come in and talk with the staff. To learn about the proposed changes to the code. So. This would be that time over the next couple of weeks for you to, to reach out to those folks and. Encourage them to come in and take a look at things, get questions answered, so that you're not looking at those six months from now and trying to answer those questions. It also would be the time for them to submit any comments that they might have related to the proposed. Adoption and the city's amendments. So I just point those out for the record, and I know that the council members are aware of that, but for people listening. Outside of that, I just wanted to make those statements. All right, anything further on this one?
Yeah, just if I may, real quick, when you're going through the. Exhibit A, that's the big one for title fifteen oh four that I'm, that's modifying to adopt these new ones, you're going to see a lot of red in there. And a lot of that red is the code has basically just renumbered or moved things, so it's. It's grammatical, or it's just numbering. It's not a lot of those. Please go back to the agenda build. It's really kind of highlighting. I think there's five items that are basically going to be different, so that'll help you, so you're not thinking you have to read and understand everything. Just sections got moved, it got deleted, moved to a different spot, so.
All right, thank you very much. All right, seeing nothing else on this, thank you for the presentation, and we'll have this scheduled for first reading sometime in June. First week in June. Possibly May twenty-third. There you go. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item will be councilmember reports. I'll go ahead and start on this end this evening with councilmember Campbell.
Uh, yeah, I was at Lake Ty Park on, on Sunday, so. With a couple of council members. I know councilmember Kenny was there, yeah, running in the five K. On the Casey's five K annual memorial run there and, gosh, and then the Battle of the Badges afterwards. I think you guys still have the title, right? Yes, there it is. That event just keeps getting bigger, and it was. Very well done, great representation of just the park system, you know, as well. It was, it was really, it was really cool event and. And how they've tied those two together, the Battle of the Badges and, but the five K in the morning and. Was great. And then I just came from, so in case you're wondering. The Monroe High School baseball team was in the playoffs. It was elimination a game against those, the Panthers. And they came, they scored seven, they were like the Mariners, they scored seven runs at the top of the seventh comeback. Beat the Panthers by two, so Snohomish is, is no more in the playoffs. They have gone home. So they panthered it. I mean, they could did, however you want it. But anyway. It's just a good time of year. Yeah, I know exactly. I knew you'd appreciate that. So there you go. There's your baseball score update too.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Davis, go ahead.
Yeah, so the day was beautiful, and the fifth graders were out in force. And we went out and we planted a willow tree alongside Lake Ty, and it, it was, it went off very well.
Thank you.
And we had. Several council members, both county and, and city. And, and other. Folks out there to, to, to help us do that, and it, it went off really well, and I thought everybody had a good time out there.
That's great.
And you can see the, you can see the willow from your house, the parking lot there.
Nice.
I've already pointed it out to a few people, so. Good deal.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for doing that.
You bet.
Uh, Councilmember Fulcher, go ahead.
I was also at the Battle of the Badges on Sunday, and I have to say, despite some really clever heckling from someone on my row. The fire department would just not switch out their pitchers, so, you know. Anyway, it was a great game. I encourage anybody who's missed it, just make sure you come next year. It's pretty awesome. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
Yes, that was a lot of fun, and going through the. Community Academy earlier this year, it was really great because I knew a lot of the players now. And it was just a blast, and it was really fun to run. I ran with Onsgaard Dumshin, who's the middle school band teacher. And we did okay for middle-aged people, but what a wonderful event. And, you know, I was looking around at that field and. You know, when I first moved to Monroe, that field wasn't there, the lighting wasn't there. What a beautiful place, and I was so proud to just sit there and, and be running in this event, and all the people were there, and it just made me proud. To be a member of this community, to be a council member, to be running in the event, and it was just for such a great cause. It's for a scholarship. At Monroe High School, which is just wonderful. So it was a really good day, and, and parks, our parks are just the best. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kenny. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's been great walking around Lake Ty and truly coming along there. It's great to see the warehouse. Making things nicer, and I love how we've made the trail go straight out now. So that it's not two businesses driveways going right where the trail is. It's much safer. At least it seems much safer, and. There's, I see where they did some paving to fix the construction, and I see it's already kind of pulling apart. So there may need to be some further repairs there down the road, but. It's looking great. Parks are looking great.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanford. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Hello, it's been a busy few weeks. Haven't been in person here for a little bit. Darn work thing gets in the way, getting ready for all this stuff. We, we're all on our interface at work. And just busy, the improvement to the trail at Lake Ty is amazing. I wasn't able to go to the game of War of the Badges, Battle of the Badges. Someone had a football game, but you guys are losing next year. For sure. I, I don't know if I would often win. And then just a chance to talk about Washington DC when I went back with. Councilmember Kenny and Fulcher and Mayor Thomas, because I haven't been here for a bit. So what a great experience. We really had a chance to. Talk with a lot of people and keep our agenda going with five twenty-two and our improvements in the city and our improvements in the county. And it was just a great experience. I learned a ton. I think I was, I was Google searching stuff constantly. What was, what is this? What is this? And what does this pertain to? So. It was a really, really great experience. If you guys ever get a chance to go to Washington DC, you can't help but leave there feeling proud of. Your country and your communities. So that's how I feel about it. So. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough.
Yes, I was at the ballgame as well, and. When I left at the seventh inning stretch. Because I had something else I had to do. I thought maybe the fire department was going to prevail. Because they were ahead. And then to find out the police department came in strong in the last couple innings was. It went the other way, so. Next year, you'll have to get out there and play and be part of it, and. Maybe it'll go the other way. It was a lot of fun. The Arbor Tree thing was fine too, was a great experience. A bunch of. Fifth graders like herding cats. But the teachers, Jeff Presley, the principal. Mrs. The school board. President. Was there. Couple other folks that introduced themselves, and I'm too old to remember their name. But it was a great event. Kids had a good time when. I took my dog and the kids. Played with the dog more than they played about the tree. But that's okay. If the kids are happy, I'm happy. It was, it was a lot of fun. It was a busy week or two, so. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and go down to the staff reports, start off with the Parks Department report with Director Farrell, Director Farrell. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So. According to all of your reports, thank you for doing my report. I'll take questions.
No. Drop the mic.
Yes, exactly. Thank you very much. Uh, no, the the report is in in, you know, attachment in in your packet there and and just some some things on on this is like, yeah, our parks are heavily loved, you know, and and now we've moved out of winter into spring and, you know, on the first page, there's a you know, a mention about what our what our crew's been up to, some of the things among many, and one of them was is that made a lot of people two legged and four legged folks uh, happy at Wiggly Field. It's a very popular dog park and they did some renovation to turf areas there. So so that was really nice. And then yeah, we were able to get all of our our seasonal folks on board. We brought in some of them in April and the rest of them in May. So so we're we're at full strength there. You know, there's, there's a mention about the egg hunt, how wonderful that was. And I know that was mentioned at a previous meeting and Arbor Day celebration. What can I say? And and I gotta say that one thing I can't say is that that was probably the best location for a tree planting on the west side of the lake. It was just just a great setting. So that was neat. And then there was the kids fishing fishing day as well. And then the mayor had mentioned that a previous council meeting gave an update, a report on the open house that went really well. Uh, we received a lot of good input, especially from young children who will be utilizing the new playground at Blueberry Park. And so we have taken their their suggestions and we've made a renovation, or I'm sorry, a revision to the final design that we'll be bringing back to our park board next week. So so we're really, really moving forward with that and really appreciate all the all the input we receive from our community. Um, and then the last thing that's on the report is that that I did pull together basically what we're calling the the Lake Ty Fields and the and the Frehlin's Elementary School story. Uh, background history, so have that all there and attached to that is is that that original agreement from two thousand and three. Want to make a note that the lights turn off every day now at ten PM. So thank you for bringing it up, council member Campbell. Appreciate that. Um, and outside of the report, a couple of things just to look forward to is that our our staff are grading the 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 gravel roadway and and parking areas at Al Borland Park and the South Lot Two, because we always do that after the winter rains and whatnot. So potholes are gonna go away again. And then also next Wednesday, we're looking forward to working with members of the Monroe Garden Club. Uh, they'll be potting up the hanging baskets again, so you'll see those going up in another week. So that concludes my report. Take any questions?
Thank you, Director Farrell. Are there any questions for Director Farrell? Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Uh, why in your report with the map, it shows proposed Brehlin's Elementary School? Why does it say propose? I mean, it's already there. Why is?
Uh, that is probably because it was from the original agreement. That was that that was executed prior to the school being built.
Okay, yeah. Any other questions for Director Farrell? All right, thank you very much, Director Farrell. We're gonna go ahead and move on now to the um, Human Services Work Report. And I turn to Coordinator Adams, Coordinator Adams, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Thomas, Monroe, uh, council members. Uh, in your report attached to your agenda materials, there are a couple items I'd like to just highlight. It seems so strange to be talking about the cold weather shelter uh, this week with such beautiful weather and temperatures in the eighties and nineties coming. But on March fifteenth, the cold weather shelter season officially ended with a record breaking season of sixty-nine nights open. That's about fifteen more nights than usual. Um, we are very grateful for our partnership with BOA to um, take care of our unhoused residents. Seventy-five in total were served at the cold weather shelter on some of the coldest nights of the year. So we're very grateful for the volunteers and staff who were able to make that possible. Um, there's also a draft of a business resource flyer that we have been working with a team of communication consultants uh, to produce. This flyer has gone um, in front of the Economic Development Advisory Board, as well as the Public Safety Commission and our Community Human Services Advisory Board had some feedback and suggested um, changes to incorporate into it. So this will be coming back to you, I believe, at a future date for um, you to take another look at. And then the last item I wanted to just highlight is our mobile mental health program. Um, our clinician is in her final weeks of training. Uh, she's writing along with some of our other local programs uh, to get a feel for how they do their co-response. And that's Mobile Mental Health Project is going to be available to our first responders as a resource to help respond to people who are experiencing mental health crisis, beginning June first, I believe, is the kickoff dates. So um, with that, if there's any questions or feedback, I'm happy to answer.
All right, thank you very much. Um, councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Uh, just wanted to tell you, I really appreciate the flyers that you developed. I think we all get questions about these topics and it's easy to understand, attractive. And um, they're just great. So thank you so much. I will be using them and directing people to them. Thank you very much for developing those.
And Chief and I are gonna do a walkabout downtown and go and hand out and personally interact with business owners when we go and distribute those.
Any other questions for Coordinator Adams? All right, thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that one would be the City Administrator Report. I turn to Administrator Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll start off with the extended agenda. Looking forward to next week on May sixteenth, we will have a Finance and Human Resources Committee Meeting. We will have under New Business, a Communications Project Update uh, with Ben Worthen and then the twenty twenty-two Annual Report Review and the twenty twenty-three Budget Amendments with Becky Hasser. Uh, we will not be having a regular study session that evening. So next week's study session is canceled. For May twenty-third, we will have a P three Committee Meeting, so Transportation, Planning, Parks and Recreation and Public Works. Uh, we will be doing New Business, which is the School District Capital Facilities Plan Updates with Amy Bright. And then for the regular council business meeting, under the consent agenda, we'll have our regular items, approval of payments, payroll, minutes and authorization of a contract with Ferguson Enterprises for the water meter radio antennas. Uh, our new neighborhoods require us to extend the antennas so they can reach and read those meters. Under New Business, we have an ordinance for the School District Capital Facility Plan Update, first read, and then Council Chambers mural contract with Ally Edwards and handbook updates with Ben Worthen, and then the regular reports.
Okay, any questions about the extended agenda? All right, go ahead and move on to the next item.
All right, so for June twentieth, we have tentatively scheduled a Joint City Council and Planning Commission Meeting, and that is to go over um, elements of the comprehensive plan and then looking for a motion to cancel that May sixteenth study session.
Is there a motion to cancel the May sixteenth study session? Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
I moved to cancel the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three City Council Study Session.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kenny, a second from Councilmember Hanford to cancel the May sixteenth study session. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Great. And then not on the report, but two items just for kudos. Excuse me, I'm gonna cough. All right, still getting over that cold from a couple of weeks ago, but two kudos, kudos to Becky Hasser and our team in Public Works for the Transportation Benefit District uh, meeting last week. I have to say that was the best TBD presentation I've seen in my career. I love the drone footage. So I um, just wanted to encourage uh, Becky and Scott and the other members of Public Works uh, to continue on. It was a really good meeting that we had. And then the second kudos is if you haven't already seen the new wayfinding signs are popping up around town. And I wanna especially do a shout out to the eagle eyed members of our community who have noticed that City Hall is not to the east of um, Main Street or Lewis Street. It is to the west. So uh, Mayor Thomas has already been working with staff and our contractors to make sure that um, we get that sign headed in the right direction. It's funny because we must have done what, two or three rounds of QA QC looking at those maps, trying to get those right, micro members. It was tedious. And we still managed to get one of them wrong. Hopefully only one of them wrong, though. Hopefully the rest of them are all right. But
Not insulted, no.
Uh, well, it was to the historic City Hall. That's where it's going. Yes, the historic City Hall. That's where people are being sent. So at any rate, we'll we'll get that resolved. So thank you to everybody who has sent me photos and emails. Yes. But anyway, it's good to know that people have noticed the new signs. I guess that's the plus, right? It it definitely captures people's attention, but kudos to to Scott Peterson and his team again for getting those wayfinding signs up. They look lovely.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for Administrator Knight? All right, Mayor's report. You got a Monroe this week there in your packets. Uh, issued a proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. That's in there for your review. Attended Planning Commission last night, uh, went ahead and gave the State of the City update to the Planning Commission. And had a busy week last week doing a number of things that I'm just not recalling right now to be able to run off on on what I did with the city. So I uh, do appreciate very much, as I said earlier, our Mayor Pro Ten uh, for taking the tree planting. Um, I was not available that day. I had a conflict that arose just a couple of days before. So thank you very much for for doing that, Councilmember Davis. Um, and there is a chance that I will not be here on Memorial Day, so uh, please take a look at your email. I'm asking if there's a council member that would be willing to coordinate the reflying uh, for Memorial Day as I may not be here this year. Um, as I've discussed with you all, this is something that I've been doing for a number of years. Um, I go ahead and buy the wreath and put it out there. We don't involve staff, except that staff does pick up the tripod. So thank you very much for doing that. But this is something that I'm hoping that when I'm no longer serving as mayor, that there will be this interest in the community to continue uh, recognizing our veterans on Veterans Day and uh, people who we have lost on Memorial Day. Uh, I don't want the memorial that's been built to sort of disappear into the past like the one did at Memorial Field. So I would encourage anybody that's interested in in doing that to to go ahead and volunteer. Um, and I'll be happy to pitch in twenty dollars for the reef. That's something that I've organized on my own in the past and paid for on my own. Uh, so I would encourage council members to share in that. Uh, councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I guess first of all, thank you for doing that every year and I received Gmail and just because we're not able to reply, oh, I thought it'd be best just to voice that I'm willing to pitch in twenty bucks towards it as well.
Okay.
And who, I just don't have the bandwidth to run point on it currently. Uh, but whoever decides to get it. Uh, if there's you know, a few, just a a few words that are gonna be said or a quick gathering like we've done in the past. Uh, just a suggestion, maybe have Jody send that out uh, to whichever council member spearheads this and uh, I would, if I'm able to make it, I would love to attend. So.
All right, thank you. Thanks. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Uh, get open. I'll be glad to contribute as well. Uh, one thing I haven't heard mentioned tonight that you might want to put out is the the eleventh meeting at the Saint Vincent de Paul on the McKinney Vento homeless parking and I guess sleeping would be the word up at the up at that parking lot, that meeting, I believe, is Thursday, the eleventh at five o'clock.
Yeah, I'm gonna turn, I'm gonna turn to Administrator, I'm sorry, to Coordinator Adams to answer that question. I think you're Ben Worthen this evening. Oh. Yes, you are.
All right, yes, um, on the eleventh, uh, Saint Vincent de Paul is hosting a community meeting to address the safe parking site. Um, it's part of the temporary encampment code requires them to have um, a public meeting. Um, the things that are important to know about the project are that uh, it is referral based. Um, there are background checks involved and there will be wraparound services and case management involved uh, for the safe parking. So it's not like it's a free draw for anybody to just go and park. Um, it's for a matter of, I believe, three pre-parking places that will be designated for families in our Monroe School District. Um, and I'm trying to think what else would be good to share with you about that, but the meeting is from five to seven up at the Saint Vincent de Paul Resource Center and
And it is temporary, which means
And it is um, I believe they have a six month window for the first part of it, according to the the encampment code.
Okay, so just for clarity, for anybody that might be asking council members' questions, it's for, it's a temporary encampment because that's what the code calls it.
Yes.
It's three vehicles
Yep.
per night. Um, it is based on, what's that? Four, four vehicles. Okay, uh, there are families that have been vetted through a background process where their kids happen to be attending the Monroe School District.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, um, councilmember Scar, and we will notice this, is that correct? In the event that we do have a potential form? Yeah, I'm just verifying. Perfect. So we will have this notice for potential form, just in the event that we have a form of council members present. And to to also underscore that this is a requirement of our code that's based on state law that the person, that the party, the organization that would be hosting a temporary encampment is required to give a presentation to the community.
Correct.
So this is not a public hearing, just to set expectations. This isn't a public hearing like going before a hearing examiner or a board of adjustments or a planning commission to take testimony. This is an opportunity for the uh, organization to be able to share what it is that they're doing with the public.
Correct.
And to answer any questions the public may have.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Scarborough, you still have a floor? Do you have any other questions or?
All right, understanding what you've said and what the mayor just said. It's, it's already going through. This is just to let people know what's gonna be there, not to have any comment or input on to whether it should happen or not.
Yeah, this is a, an opportunity for community members' concerns and questions to be answered. So it's, uh, I believe going through the permitting process right now, according to the temporary encampment code. Um, and then this is the opportunity for Saint Vincent de Paul to address any concerns that come up with the neighborhood.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and handle the Memorial Day.
I appreciate
We'll get together and
Okay, I'll teach you what I do and then you can do whatever you want to do.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna make a recommendation for folks that are not veterans that Memorial Day I I understand Veterans Day, I think it would be good for people who aren't veterans to uh, to do the reflying for Veterans Day. So just when it comes time for for Veterans Day, I, that would be uh, hopefully I'll be able to do it this year, but in the event that I'm not going into the future, I think that it's kind of like throwing your own recognition or celebration or party uh, to do it if you're a veteran for Veterans Day, but um, I I do appreciate, uh, Councilmember Davis uh, stepping up for Memorial Day. Thank you. Um, all right, I don't think I have anything else for the good of the order this evening, except that I do want to say hi to Zach. Well, so everybody, everybody say hi, Zach.
Good evening, council. Hello, Mayor.
And I think that Jody won the, won the bet tonight that it's eight oh eight. We have no further business this evening, so unless there's objection, we are adjourned and there is no objection. We are adjourned. Have a great evening, everybody.